I would like to call the Wall City Council meeting, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. Council meeting to order. Carolyn, would you please call well?
Hawkman?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Stan Anderson?
Here.
Houston?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Pop?
Here.
Mike Anderson?
Here.
We are have a forum.
Okay, Rashawn, would you like to read the special needs? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any order of business for emergencies?
No.
Do we have an attendance on Zoom?
Councilman Stan Anderson's on Zoom.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Mike is moved.
Second.
And Dan seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Do we have a conflict of interest to declare?
I'll abstain from the item nine for the bills for the ambulance.
Okay. Any others? Thank you, Zach. Would I have, in your packet was the minutes from the January ninth meeting? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Zach has moved.
Second.
Mike seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Sorry, Stan, I just go over here. Okay. In your packet also was the city of Wall bills, which totaled this segment to a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Hundred and seventeen thousand sixteen dollars and fifty seven cents. The fire department bills are included. Two thousand three hundred seventy-four dollars and nineteen cents. The library, one hundred and five dollars. Do I have a motion to approve the city of Wall, the fire department, and the library claims?
So moved.
Rick has moved.
Second.
And Jerry seconded. Are there any questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, also in your packet was the ambulance financials. And this is a comparative between December thirty-one, twenty-four, and December thirty-one of twenty-three in terms of the balance sheet as well as the income statement of December twenty-four.
It's still trying to print something.
So was, included in your packet was the expense budget for the city of Wall. And also included were building permits for lot four, block five of Echo Valley for Howie Construction to build houses on both of those lots. And Garrett has been out and observed those, know that they fit the the pins were found and also the, not the sidelines, setbacks are in order. Okay, with that, we move on to eleven, and that's public comments. Do we have anyone here today that would like to express concerns with any issue on or not on the agenda? Action will not be taken, and you'd have three minutes to visit. Seeing none, that moves us to the Wall Economic Development Report. Rashawn, please.
Good evening, everybody. All right, so we've got a lot going on, juggling a lot of walls. So I'll just get started and go into it. On February twelfth is our first coffee event. I invite you all, especially those of you that have businesses. It's at nine AM, hosted at First Interstate Bank, and it'll be on human resources pitfalls to avoid. I think we have a really good speaker, and that would be very, this is much more moving now that we don't have Kirk. Very exciting to see here. Coming up on February eleventh, we are hosting a partner event for our bold initiatives sessions that we are trying to get our board up to speed and on point. And we're inviting everybody, I believe you've all gotten invites and probably asked by certain members of the board to come to that. We would like everybody to come that we've invited for the community and the businesses to help us redefine what we're doing, how we're doing it, and make sure we're on point and serving the community well. So that's why we want everybody to come and voice their opinions with that. So there will be food at five thirty, and we will start the meeting at six, and I'm told it will last two hours, and will be done at eight. If you know you're coming and you have an RSVP, then please let me know so I can get ahead and come, especially for food. All right, February fifth, I'll be attending the Career Fair at Western Dakota Technical College. So I am going to try to help get employees and interns for our businesses and maybe some trades into our industrial park. So if you are in need of employees, please let me know so that I can put your name out there and speak for you at that career fair. And that is next week, so please let me know as soon as possible. I have updated our website. I went through and gave our web people about three pages of notes, cleaned up a bunch of links, updated information, and there will be hyperlinks throughout with access to our investor businesses' websites so that you will be in multiple places on the internet, and hopefully that will help your businesses. I started reaching out to the businesses to do BRDs, which are Business Retention and Expansion visits, to find out what our business community needs, what they feel is going on, and things that we can help them with. In doing that, I put together some marketing information on programs that we have, our revolving loan fund, as well as other programs, which I'll be handing out to businesses. Once I finish up with our investors, I will move on to others that are not investors in hopes to get them to become investors and to educate the community on the programs that we have because I've been finding out that not everybody realizes what we have. I went out and made phone calls to all the homeowners that have newly built homes and informed them of our tax incentives that we have put in place for new-built homes. And about half of them didn't even know they existed, so they were very grateful of that information. And putting together postcards to send out to our realtors to let them know, Cheyenne as well as other realtors, so that when people are looking to build homes, they know that Wall is a good place to come and do that. I'm also doing that for the IP Park as well and sending that out to commercial realtors as well so that we can advertise that. I've attended several events, and one that I really wanted to share with you is I went to Spearfish's annual meeting. They're expanding their hospital there. It's going to be huge. Their first phase will be done in the year of twenty twenty-five, and then two more phases after that. They want to help, and it's kind of Monument's mission is to help bring healthcare closer to home so we don't have to travel so far. Their president and CEO was there, and I captured her and put Wall in her ear because they are putting together their ten-year strategic plan. And I would like our health services to expand here as well so our people don't have to necessarily travel all the way to Rapid to get the care they need. All right, a bunch of fixtures and social events and stuff I attended. I attended a child hall, which is with the base, and I bring this up because this is a good connection. If anybody is interested in, you become an honorary commander, which pairs you up with a commander on the base, and it helps the base understand the communities they're in, and the communities understand the base's needs. So there's a collaboration between the two, and we can help each other out. And I think this is very helpful as we want to help bring people from the base out here to Wall to make them their, just our home and their community. I met with Dr. Krauser over at the school. She was very grateful that I came over. She was unaware of a lot of our programs that we had available as well. She got me up to date on the CTE program, and we're going to work together to help develop careers for our youth and bring them back to Wall. We also talked about the powerhouse and a possible event center. Just putting a seed in everybody's ear that we maybe like to work on something for that. There's funding out there for things like that. With the school, there's extra funding. It will help create year-round jobs, year-round events, so that maybe we can keep some of our hotels open and our businesses making business not just during our peak season but all year round. So nothing has been set in stone or anything like that, but that is one of the roads we're going down for that event center. Will also allow us to maybe expand that so our youth isn't jumping all over the place to try to practice and have their events and their games and all that kind of stuff, too. So it would benefit the business and the community as a whole.
Rashawn, I have a question.
Yes.
I got a little confused. When's the dodging danger pitfall for HR event?
That is February twelfth at nine AM.
Okay, so I did have it right. Thank you.
You're welcome. I met.
And how long is that last?
It'll be an hour long.
Oh, perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
I met with West River Electric's new CEO, Robert Rank, and he's looking forward to helping us and work with us here in Wall. He's got a lot of good connections on a state level and federal level, which will help us out. And he's also, I put that seed in the ear about the event center, too, and he's looking into that as well. He brought up something that would be good for that, which is a bid tax, which would tax perhaps hotel guests, and that money would go into help fund perhaps the event center. So it wouldn't tax the community, just visitors that come to the community. Something else to look at, I said, nothing's in stone. We're just gathering stuff together. I also attended the GOED. They put together a new website or joined with the company to submit new requests for information for businesses that want to build, so IP Park, which will allow us to streamline the process. Once we put the information in there, it's in there, and just after, it makes it easier to submit the next time, allows for collaborations. Unfortunately, there have not been many requests for informations coming out from the state recently. So it's been a little slow, and I'm hoping it'll start to pick up now that the new administration is being put into place and businesses can finally figure out where they're going and what they can do. And we can get maybe some businesses here in our park. And that's all I have for my updates. Anybody have any questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rashawn. Again, next item on the agenda is a resolution, twenty-five oh two, to support House Bill ten forty-three. This was brought to our attention by Lily Stone, and the House, the hearing on it is going to be tomorrow morning. And what this resolution addresses is for emergency medical services, and it would be support for this bill. The resolution would indicate the city council has strong support for the bill, and the bill will require counties and municipalities to provide emergency medical services. It will, it's a commitment for excellence so that EMS services ensure high-quality services, which our ambulance certainly does, encourages collaboration among municipalities, counties, and stakeholders, and authorizes testimony by city officials or ambulance director or the ambulance board. And so I am asking for an approval of this particular resolution, unless there's any questions that we could entertain.
There are operational fund shortfalls. Does that mean the state would step in and help too?
Well, that's what this does, is set up. Okay, they, what, already there is court costs that, when they're generated, they're directed into different places or different items. What this would do is add a five-dollar court cost, and it would come back to the, to this, what they're calling a grant fund, which will generate about a million dollars. And then ambulance or EMSs, medical services, could apply for those funds. Any other questions?
Are there teeth in it? Like, say we couldn't finance, just out of curiosity, say we couldn't finance the ambulance, which of course, that it be a last resort, can they force us to?
Force us to finance it?
Yeah, I mean, we want to. I mean, we're going to do it. What if we're out of money?
Right. Because the wording in here is require counties and municipalities to provide emergency medical services within their jurisdiction. That is one of the parts of this bill.
Who's bringing it forward?
It is Representative Emery. He is an EMT, and he comes from like down by Todd County. He's in that, in that jurisdiction.
Well, I'm for it because I think, you know, the thought of us not having an ambulance is terrifying. It's so necessary, and I'm confident the council will do everything in its power to ensure that it continues.
Because it, not only, when you read into that, this, on the same line, it also requires counties to step up and provide medical services. And so that is one of the things that Lily's bringing to our attention that our city council is already stepping up and doing it, but it would be great if the county commissioners could also figure out a way to help their ambulance services because it'd be Keystone, Hill City, New Underwood, Wall. Have I covered all the communities in Penning County, as well as Rapid City, but?
So Rapid City could?
But, okay, also in this bill, though, it also addresses only communities under twenty-five hundred. If you read through it. So then they're helping the new Underwoods, the Walls, the?
Need a motion?
I, I would like to have a motion to approve the resolution twenty-five oh two, which is supporting House Bill ten forty-three. And with that motion then, tonight, Carolyn and I will send an email off with this resolution signed to Mr. Emery's because the hearing for this is at ten o'clock tomorrow morning.
Make that motion.
Okay, Jerry has moved.
Second.
And Zach is seconding approval of resolution twenty-five oh two to support House Bill ten forty-three. And it's got a ways to go. I mean, it's, this is just the start, the hearing of it, so. Okay, any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, then, honor, next on our agenda is the Pennington County Law Enforcement Contract. It also was in your packet. This is an agreement. It's dated January first, twenty twenty-five. It covers what the Wall, they call it the patrol office, what the Personnel Administration is, and what it does is appoints four deputy sheriffs to Wall. It also approves that the Wall City Council will approve the living location of assigned deputies here. It also includes the part that sixty percent of the annual budget for the contracted orders, hours, will be paid by the city of Wall, which was what we've been doing already, and it's budgeted. And that the sheriff deputies will keep records and reports and activities and report it to the city council. It also talks about the facilities, which the city is providing, the office location already. And it, by that, it includes office space, furniture, office equipment, janitor service, electricity, water, and utilities. And it also says that they won't make any structural changes to that office without express written consent. They will provide the uniforms and equipment for their deputies, and it covers a hundred and twenty-three hours per week, and the scheduling will be done by the sheriff or his designee. It also has a whole harmless clause, and the period of this agreement is for three years. So it would take it to January first, twenty twenty-eight, unless we give them sixty days of written notice that we're going to terminate. Now, we just, I just scanned that.
She kind of indicated that they just swallowed a new contract under their newers' agreements, you know, that they?
So he's signing up on it?
Right.
Sounds good.
Yes, it would be signed, well, actually, it's already signed by Brian Mueller.
There's no big changes from their former contract?
No.
I'd make that motion.
Okay, Rick has moved to approve the Law Enforcement Services Agreement with Pennington County.
Second.
And Dan has seconded. Any other questions or thoughts? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay. The next item is to waive use of community center fee for a benefit February second.
No, to approve.
Dan has moved.
Second.
Zach seconded. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Okay, now that brings us to the American Towers Property Abatement contract. So Carolyn?
So this was taxed incorrectly. It should have been taxed as a utility rather than a real estate. And you guys approved the abatement on it for the twenty twenty-three. This is now for the twenty twenty-four. I asked her if we were going to have to continue to do this every year, so it's the cell tower there. And she said no. She thought that they were on track within as long as the equalization office kept kept doing the processes. They have changed it now for utility taxes rather than real estate, so. But it does need to be approved because there's a line item on that that you guys approved at the circle meeting, so.
I, I am going to abstain from this vote because we leased the tower.
You leased the tower? No, the land is?
Yeah, I, yeah.
The tower's on your land?
I wish they had the tower. Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Because I was going to say, you need to pay, okay, okay.
I was hoping.
Okay, so, okay, so Zach has moved to approve the American Towers Property Abatement. Jerry has seconded. Any other questions? And Rick has indicated he is going to recuse himself. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. So that brings us to a tree grant from the Finance Officers Report.
It was in September. We've done this tree grant before and gotten money for trees out of the golf course and things like that. And this one we applied for was for up at the park where the trees from the school was moved up to there by the swimming pool. And so that's where the application indicated that we were placing the trees. I had applied for, the grant could be applied for up to five thousand dollars. We received twenty-five hundred. I just wanted to let you know that we did receive a grant for some trees, and of course, now is not the time to plant that. So as the time gets closer, you know, we'll proceed with what needs to be done. And also wanted to say, I'm so close in finishing up the December bank reconciliation. I had an issue that the auditors helped me with, and I just got the email response on it today. So I think once I make the adjustments, as they indicated, I will be golden on that December bank reconciliation. And then I plan to really hit it hard to get onboard with the new software and the climate counter. So that's what I'm going to be doing, as well as closing out the year and all that fun type of stuff that happens this time of year.
Okay, and once you have, and once that's concluded, then you'll be able to we could go back to giving us our monthly reports to some of the other agencies that also want those. All of those are going to be coming out now.
With the new software, my goal is to get even more started with that.
Yep, okay, very good. Anything else?
Only down here.
Okay, and as I indicated, Garrett is not here tonight. That brings us to the mayor's report. So the first thing I want to do is invite Rick to tell us what he learned at the South Dakota Tourism Conference. This, that you just came?
Boston Conference did five point zero one billion dollars worth of business. There was a three percent increase in revenue and a one point eight percent increase in travelers coming, coming to our state. Really good conference, a lot of, a lot of speakers. Lindy Ireland got an award at the tourism conference. I don't have that list in front of me. It was a triangle ranch, bed and breakfast. That, that was really nice. And it was well-attended. There were over six hundred people there, really good turnout. They had to turn people away from the banquet because it, right, fire code, didn't have enough food, various things. I worked the, let's see, VIA, but now it's Coalition TC, sorry, I'm getting the thing down, TCSD, Tourism Coalition of South Dakota Booth. We sell raffle tickets. This is part of a fundraiser. We pumped it. VIA was started thirty years ago, and this is, this is like VIA on steroids. We put a lot of money in. We got significant contributors to, to put in five grand apiece, Waldrug did, and to, so we could have a year-round executive director, and that's Carmen Schramm. And she's been in tourism a long time, did a great job. And then we started selling raffle tickets Tuesday night from one to seven. That was new. I didn't have any help. Sarah, my daughter came and helped me, and then after that, she said, I think I'm going to have to help you for the whole conference. I said, yeah, I don't disagree, and she did. That was a new night. We had more help from the board the next day. We sold over sixty-two hundred dollars worth of tickets. Twenty-eight baskets were donated for the Tourism Coalition of South Dakota by constituents from the various tourism areas, and their value was over fifteen thousand four hundred dollars. And so we raffled a lot of chances for that. It's a great raffle, and we used to sell T-shirts. Well, you never got the right sizes. You ran out of extra large, you had tons of smalls, and then you get done, you have all this inventory that you don't know what to do with. This is like bulletproof. You have the raffle at the luncheon, the last day they announce the twenty-eight names. They come and get the stuff. The inventory's gone. We didn't pay anything for it. That's awesome fundraiser, anyway. But it was a great conference. Jim Hagan gave the invocation. That was a new twist. Did a great job, really nice. And the banquet couldn't have went better. They, they, they had a wonderful meal. And the words just went like clockwork, and we were out there at nine o'clock. And Sarah and I walked quickly to our room, packed in twenty minutes, and went to Walmart. But the weather was good, but it was an awesome conference.
Great, great.
The state is, all the credit to Jim Hagan and the Tourism Department. They put forth a huge effort, and it's, it's a great opportunity. There were, I, I think there were a hundred and twenty-eight new attendees.
So yes, Lindy Ireland from the Triangle Ranch Bed and Breakfast.
Yes.
She won the Hospitality Customer Service Award, and she's a member of our chamber. So how about that? That was cool. And the other hometown that we can take a little pride in is the Tourism Rising Star Award went to Ashley Geigel of Myrtle, and she's married to Kyle, which is Darwin and Lawrence. So, yeah, we had something to do with that, I'm sure. Somehow we can take a little pride there.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, so very good. So what is the word for next year?
You know, after coming off of your life that, I'm sure we're optimistic, and, and I think there's optimism in the country, and I mean, I think it's a, should be a great year to go on vacation. Yeah, I can't, I can't, can't imagine us not doing as well or better.
Great. You don't go on vacation. Everybody else, we want to go on vacation, right? You stick around. That's the main thing here. Okay, so then I also wanted to congratulate and compliment the Career and Technical Education Edition at our school. How many of you got a chance to see that yet? Dan has been there. I was there. Rick was there. Oh, my gosh, could you believe the equipment and how super?
Mary, do you have the name of the new instructor?
Yes.
Garrett? Gerlstein?
It's kind of a tricky one.
Stroshan, I think. Garrett.
Garrett is his name. And it is just exciting to see new young teachers in that school, and with that is going to make a difference to career technical educations in our area. They are going to help kids understand that, you know what, you can make a pretty darn good liver, living as a plumber or HVAC, electrician, construction guy, health careers is and that's what we need to have happen in our, our area and our facility, so I'm just congratulating the administration that went out and got the grants, the school board that had the the initiative to say, we're going to do this career technical edition, and it was just fun to see. So if you haven't been inside that, you want to take a moment to go because it is truly an awesome.
Unbelievable amount of work. I get to have my first meeting there Wednesday.
So explain some of the equipment. Are you, because?
I mean, I don't even know what some of this, I mean, but there's the, what is it, CNC, which is a computer plasma cutters. It's, you can take I think this one's, it'll do larger than four by eight sheet, I believe. But you can take a piece of steel and you put it on this, and then it rides on a cushion of air, and then you put your program into the computer, and then it just moves it around, and you can move it with just one hand, and they've got, I think, you know, I don't but Scotchman industry, they've got some big metalworking equipment from Scotchman's in there. Is, is that a little Scotchman, is that an ironworker? Yeah, I've never seen one up close. Impressive. And then the welding shop, every welding bay has its own ventilation and everything, and
And there's numerous of those.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's lots of them. It's just, it's an awesome facility.
So I know there are some recent graduates there that were really disappointed that this showed up now instead of two years or three years or four years ago. But those students that have this opportunity to take those kind of classes now and as Roshan is going to work with Western Dakota Tech and bring some adult education or some follow-up education classes in too, so that adults get to. What would you, what are you thinking, Roshan?
Well, Western Dakota Technical College, I always want to call it, but they have a rural initiative where they're bringing teachers out into rural communities to help teach these courses and stuff like that. It's one of the things I'm going to talk with them when I go down there next week and see if we can't get some of that here in Wall, especially since we have this facility to, to use, so, yeah.
Because some of you probably remember the event that we hosted, the regional event that we hosted last spring. And Western Dakota Tech president and their foundation director was down here encouraging that collaboration. So we've, we've built that connection, and Roshan's going to keep that rolling, and we'll see adult education in that new complex very soon. I, I feel confident of that. It can do so much for us. Okay, another part of my mayor report tonight is the Wildland Land Fire Agreement. As you recall, we brought that to you a while back, and we touched base with them and had a Zoom meeting. Carolyn, Travis Hershey, our airport engineer, and Tony and Brandon from Wildland Fire had a conference call. And they refined some of their needs with the engineer. And so we have scheduled a meeting now with Preston this week. And then we'll involve the airport committee and we'll, our goal is to bring that agreement back to you by, at the February tenth meeting for your approval. So that's kind of where we're at at that. And we're going to more that when we actually have the agreement in front of us. Okay, another item that I want to talk about today is housing. We still, Enhanson Edition do have one governor's home available yet. Rajadeen, the Realtor, and Trent Poulas, the builder, has indicated they've had about thirty people interested in that, but for various reasons, either they didn't qualify for the criteria or didn't quite have the funding available to themselves or whatever. But that governor's home is available at two hundred and ten thousand dollars. It could have a two or a one-car garage added. It already has the flooring, the stove and refrigerator. It has a place for a built-in microwave and a dishwasher, so if the person that bought that wanted those, those would be installed for them. It has central air. It can do either electric or propane, depending on what that person would like. So if you know of anyone that's interested, and these people would help work you work, work through the paperwork that it takes to get that governor's home, two hundred and ten thousand for that last house in Hanson Edition.
Mary, can I, can I ask how many bedrooms, how many baths? Is it three bedrooms, two baths?
I honestly haven't been inside that house, so I I've looked at.
Cheyenne, isn't that a good, great price for a home?
The problem, as Mary stated, is it's just a really small buyer pool because the folks have, they can only make so much money to buy a governor's home, but they have to be able to afford the payment. So with our interest rate environment, it's just been kind of challenging. And also, it's hard if you're a married couple with double income, because that pushes people over that income limit pretty quickly. So that's why in the past, it's worked really well for like single teachers or, you know, a single person, you know, for a service, bar service, whatever. But they're just, it's just kind of a, a small pool of buyers.
What would be like a normal interest rate now, just out of curiosity?
High sixes, low sevens.
Oh, okay. Let's get in a bit better.
A little bit.
Well, that's Hanson Edition. But then I wanted to talk about Echo Valley tonight too, so I'm glad to have Cheyenne with us. I will, I will pass around this map again, which we looked at last time also. I think I have enough for everybody. Okay, so that's the updated map. This is all I'm using here, Cheyenne. And then I also want to share with you a spreadsheet that Carolyn has put together for our benefit of review, because what I want to share with you is past those around. There have been, and if you look on the, kind of the bottom third, you will see where there has been a total of lots of nine lots sold. And so on that spreadsheet, it shows how much we've got, and that's always figured on a criteria of thirty percent, and then re- remove the charges for closing, et cetera, and so that's why some of those vary. So there's been nine lots sold already. Okay, then, if you look up at what is called the Golf Club Place, that is where we have, we were asked and got approved for South Dakota Housing to put twin homes on all one, all of that cul-de-sac. That's going to give us twelve living units to live at, and there will not be a criteria in terms of income. They just have to stay under a, a certain price. The builder needs to, and then the way they market that has to also be taken into consideration, but at least there isn't the income criteria that, that goes with the governor's home. Then I want you to move over to where it says Driver Circle. And there are the two lots, Lot Four and Lot Five, that we approved for the building permits. That's where those two are going to go. In that one, and then Cheyenne.
Excuse me, aren't you already working on those? Is, is that the, where, how, how construction?
Howie Construction.
They're approved, right?
Yes. Okay, so then I, Cheyenne, I'm going to put, let you put the words in the mouth. What's going to happen to the rest of that cul-de-sac?
They're all under contract now with Howie Construction, all the lots.
All of them?
Plans to the Echo Valley developers for Lot Six to be approved by him, and then he'll bring in his building permit. So he's starting on three houses, and hopefully they sell. And then he puts the whole cul-de-sac under contract so we can continue to build.
So if there's people that are looking for a house, a new house, we got them now in the wall. So.
That's fantastic.
It is amazing. So thank you, Cheyenne. I wasn't even updated enough to, thank God for being here. Okay. So that's a big deal. If people want a new house, we've got them in the wall. And the other part that I was going to talk about is at South Dakota Housing, we reached out to them on Friday. They got back to us today. Because if you recall, we had a conversation about builders that wanted to put apartment houses on the bottom of Echo Valley, Stone Drive and Golf Course. And now they have chosen to consider or to do the lots that are in the upper right-hand corner of your map along Stone Drive, the three lots. Cheyenne, please tell us about that, so I don't mess this up.
Oh, so yeah, those lots are under contract just so that the potential builders can start doing some due diligence and see if it's going to work, make sense. I know they have a lot of things that they're looking into, but the Echo Valley developers have approved it, the state has approved it, so it just has to make sense for them to move forward at this point.
And put an apartment building there. So there, again, where we were going to have three houses, we would we would have
That's Block Five, Lot One, Two, and Three, is that the one on the map?
So it's right by Socorro's House, right to the north of Socorro's. So, what I really am building up to, it means that with all of that, there's only five lots left of the twenty-four.
There's actually
No, there's only four? Okay, so again, just half, okay. See, it's moving so fast, I can't even keep up with this. Okay, so there's only four lots left of the twenty-four. I want you to know that when we wrote that loan, which is a one point four million dollar loan, this was a twelve-year plan. They told us it would take us twelve years to get this completed, and look at where we're at. I think that's huge. And secondly, I want to report too that on, on your spreadsheet, so that you know where the numbers are coming from, Carolyn put this together, that we have been paid a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for the lots, the nine lots, plus the Echo Valley folks put up a hundred thousand to begin with. So our total amount now is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand that we have collected on that particular loan. So are there any questions or comments?
I'm confused for, for the, for the apartments, building, did it move? Weren't they going to be down here, and then now they're up here?
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Because the lift station thing is not going to work.
Not going to work.
No, so they revisited.
And so they're up here?
There's a lift station across the street that Garrett could tell us all about, but he's
Oh, moved right to the north of Brad. That's just his old house. Sure, sure, I know right where that's at, and, and so there won't be a problem. Oh, wow.
So, I think that's huge excitement, and I just want to let people know that Cheyenne is the Realtor on this, and she is phenomenal on finding dollars and bankers and giving first home guidance, and I can't say enough about what you do, Cheyenne. It's awesome. So, have we missed anything on this piece of information?
It's just so exciting that we're getting, what do you, what do you call the twin units? Townhomes, that we're getting townhomes and apartments. I mean, we've just never been able to get any additional apartments. That's so exciting.
So, and Carolyn has been fielding calls, so is Roshan's, of people calling and wanting to know if we have any place to live in Wall, because they want to come to Wall. So, this is, and so the reason I'm, I'm sharing this with you is, as you hear people talk also about is there any place to live? Well, we're putting it together as fast as we can, and it's going to be soon. So, there you go. So any other questions or comments on that information then? And we're just going to be looking very soon, because there's really, what, forty-one possibilities out there? And, and so that when we get this thing filled, we're going to probably be looking at looking how to fill those other lots if we fill this, so that it's got to be on your radar, I guess, is what I'm saying.
These frozen pines that has Block Four lot.
You know, I don't know that answer. I don't think Carolyn knows the answer, it's just who's, who submitted the
Yeah, that's just whose name is on the lot. I guess I could probably Google it or whatever.
Just yours.
Okay. So, I believe that is all I had to report for. So I believe that is all I had to report for tonight. So thank you for being here, Cheyenne, and helping us get that straight. So the main thing is if you've got questions or concerns or you hear somebody, send them to Cheyenne.
And thank you to the city for being so supportive with housing development. It's huge and it's necessary, as you know, and it's been a huge help when talking to developers, trying to get them to build and come out here. Just letting them know that they're not going to hit low blocks when it comes to the city as part of building. Because when they build other places, that's all there is. So it's really appreciated what y'all do.
And it's amazing how South Dakota Housing has been on board of, holy cow. I mean, we get an answer back from them pretty darn fast. And it's like, okay, twin homes, do it. I was really scared to ask this, like, question this weekend and was so grateful when they came back with the same idea to, yeah, let's do it. So. And I can't help but, the people that have been going through all these natural disasters all over the country, I'm going to look for someplace where all we have is
Snow sometimes.
Snow and wind.
Yeah, wind. All we have is wind.
And be safe out from that.
Yeah, for sure.
Must get past the bill that they can't vote for 10 years.
That's right. Well, yeah, they'll change their mind after they get here. So, okay. So with that, we would like to move on then to items 20. Is there any items for discussion? No action would be taken. Is there any? Stan, do you, do you have any items for discussion at this point? Okay, seeing none?
No. No, I do not.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sir. I saw your head going no and I, I thought that was good. Okay, so next city council meeting, please note that is on Monday night, February 10th, and that's to allow Carolyn and I to go to South Dakota Minnesota League.
And so I guess a spinoff of that, because I forgot to mention it in my report. No one else wanted to attend that room supper, assuming, because no one got back to me about it. So. Because the deadline is this Friday.
Okay. So next council meeting, Monday, February 10th. And then what will the next one be? Just so we can let people know. Then it's back to February.
Thursday, Thursday, 20th.
So we would be back on schedule on Thursday then for February. Okay, with that being said, we do have a need for executive session.
I make a motion, we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal personnel issues according to SCL 1-25-2, parentheses 1, and parentheses 3.
Okay, Zach has seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Carolyn?
Okay, with there being no action to take after the executive session, I am going to call the meeting adjourned.